And Bryce will be stepping down on 10B. He already told you, okay. Ready? It is 1 o'clock, September 16th. This is a regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
And it is Commissioner Landgraf's turn to do the pledge allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day that you have given us and all that you have done. We pray for your guidance and wisdom in all that we do. Lord, we pray that you watch over and protect everyone, especially our first responders. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting. I didn't see any changes, any changes from the commission. Stand approved as presented then. Public comment. Item number five, this is an item where we have anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not on the agenda. We give you five minutes and please state your name when you come to the podium for the public record. Are you, are you coming Lana?
I am.
Okay.
I was trying to make eye contact with Danielle to see if this is when I was supposed to.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm Lana Duvall, President and CEO of Finney County Economic Development Corporation in my day job. However, I also had the privilege over the last several years of serving on the Moriah Fund Board. And as many of you know, that fund is, will no longer exist going forward because of changes that were made at the casino. And so, I, as a board member, would like to read a letter, if I could, on behalf of Jeff Thorpe, who's been the executive director of the Moriah Fund since its inception. And if I could, I would like to ask that Christie come into the chambers as well. I'll go ahead and get started on the letter.
Here she comes.
So, "To our valued community partners, the Moriah Fund is extremely proud of our accomplishments over the last 15 years. I could never have imagined the conversation that started 18 years ago in the long-brank saloon between myself and a few cronies would bring us to this day. Since our inception in 2010, the Moriah Fund has made 272 grants totaling $2,515,433, with total project costs of $31,43,989. I think you would agree we've made an impact in southwest Kansas. Your organization, Lee Richardson Zoo, has been invaluable to our success, and as a gesture of our sincerest appreciation, the Moriah Fund is pleased to present you with a final grantee gift check of $11,250. The only caveat is that you must cash or deposit the check by October 15, 2025. With funds left over from our final distributions from the casino, we're happy to help your organization one last time. In fact, we've written texts to 20 organizations in this process. Each of our board members was asked to provide three grantee choices, with the choice having been a past recipient, so that those folks had already been vetted. I'm eternally grateful to every single person who stood by me and the Moriah Fund during this incredibly fulfilling journey. I've enjoyed meeting you, working with you, and striving together to make a difference in our communities. We thank you for supporting the Moriah Fund, and we are saddened to close our doors, wishing you well and sending best regards, Jeff Thorpe." So, I would like to present this check and certificates to Christie on behalf of Lee Richardson Zoo, if that's okay.
I think we can handle doing the cashing.
Moving on to item number six is consideration petitions, memorials, and remonstrances. I do have a bench item that I did talk to the commissioners about. It is a proclamation. I'd like to, the proclamation is in regards to Derrick Ramos. I'd like to have the commission get a motion and a second on this proclamation, so we can present it and I can read it.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Andrew Second and by Commissioner Roy Teas. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This item passed. We'll wait for all of the family members and people to show up. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Derrick Ramos began working for the City of Garden City as Assistant City Manager in March 2022. And whereas Derrick Ramos led the team of administrative departments during a period of significant technology change and staff development. And whereas Derrick Ramos represented the city organization throughout the community, state, and country with his work in several nonprofit and advisory boards focused on topics important to Garden City, such as childcare, welcoming newcomers, and matters of social justice and equity. And whereas Derrick Ramos helped update important organization-wide plans that ensured compliance with state and federal regulators. And whereas Derrick Ramos will leave employment with the City of Garden City on September 19th, 2025, to assume his new role as Finney County Administrator. And whereas Derrick Ramos is regarded as one of the brightest, most influential, most sincere, and most recognizable public servants in the community. And whereas in his new professional role, Derrick Ramos leaves the roster of employees at the City of Garden City, but remains an important partner in the long-term success of our community. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 19th, 2025, as Derrick Ramos Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to this community, highly commend him for the manner in which he carried out his responsibilities and duties for the City of Garden City, and wish him great success as Finney County Administrator. Signed and sealed the 16th day of September 2025, Roy Cessna, Mayor." The family would like to come up and get a picture? All right, moving on to item 6A.
Item 6A, "The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Candace Gimino and the Williams, Wilson Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in the City of Garden City, Kansas."
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This item passed. I know there's a group of ladies here. Would you want to say something before I read the proclamation on this? Then I'll read the proclamation.
We would like to pass out flags to everyone and a copy of the preamble of the Constitution and a copy for you guys of the preamble of the Declaration of Independence.
Thank you. Could you guys share your names for us, please?
So, I am Candy Gimino from Bourbon City.
I'm Dixie Drake.
And you got a hardest worker.
Okay.
We are from DAR9.
Well, oh, you have any, do you have anything else to share? Sure. Sure.
So, without these two documents, we would kind of be lost. So without these documents, we wouldn't have the United States of America. So the preamble was placed in the Constitution during the last days of the Constitutional Convention by the Committee on Style, which wrote its final draft with Gougnar Morris leading effort. It was not proposed or discussed on the floor of the convention beforehand. The initial wording of preamble did not refer to the people of the United States, rather it referred to people at very state, which was the norm. The preamble serves solely as an introduction and does not assign powers to the federal government, nor does it provide specific limitations on government action. No court has ever used it as a decisive factor in a case adjudication except as regards frivolous litigation. And if you will join me and those of you that have memorized it maybe in high school like I did, this is the preamble to the United States Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. And the last document is the preamble of the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain and inalienable rights, that among these are life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying a foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form, as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for life and transient causes, and accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer, while evils are sufferable, then to write themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of uses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same objective, evices are designed to reduce them under absolute tempestism. It is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and provide new guards for their future security." This is why we have all of you guys come meet, thank you, and beware, next year is 250 for the United States of America, so we will be back.
That's right. Thank you. The proclamation, I'll read it, states, "Whereas it is a privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in Garden City, Kansas, and encourage our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Sign and seal the 16th day of September, 2025, Roy Cessna, Mayor." I'll come down and get a picture with you guys and...
And congratulations from the lake nights too.
All right, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, item 6B, "The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from the Garden City Fire Department to waive Code Section 62-15 on lawful solicitation to allow for department personnel to collect donations for the Muscular Dystrophy Association Fill the Boot Drive on September 20th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m." Chief Ursick?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The Garden City Fire Department would like to participate in fundraising efforts, the Muscular Dystrophy Association, with Fill the Boot Drive. This has historically been a very successful community event dating back to the 1970s, and one of the main ways the department involved itself in the community. This year's event will be held Saturday, September 20th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Fire partners will be accepting donations at the following locations, Kansas Avenue with Fleming Street, Walmart Superstores, Schollman Crossing Shopping Center, and Fall Fest Downtown Garden City. Waiver of Code Section 62-12 on lawful solicitation is required as the Garden City Fire Department employees will be soliciting donations in the city's road right-of-way and entering public streets. Code 62-15 prohibits solicitation, which results in individuals entering public streets that result in interference or the orderly flow of traffic. The waiver of 62-15 is what's being requested of the city commission at this meeting. Alternative before you, the governing body may approve Code Section 62-12 on lawful solicitation and the Garden City Fire Department personnel at the intersections of Kansas Avenue with Fleming Street, Fall Fest Downtown, Garden City Walmart Supercenter, and Schollman Crossing Center. Alternative two, the governing body may deny the request for the waiver. Staff recommends the governing body approve the waiver of Code Section 62-15 on lawful solicitation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for chief? Entertain a motion on this item.
So moved.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, chief, good luck.
Item seven is reports of the city manager. Finney County EMS Director Smith is here to provide an update on EMS operations for the first half of 2025. Director Smith?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Kenny Smith, Director of EMS at Finney County. Sorry, I'm kind of battling the allergies right now. So the first part of the year has brought a lot of changes to the EMS crew. In April, a new director was hired, this guy. Since then, excuse me, on pace to provide more availability of care to the ever-growing population of Finney County and Garden City, as we continue to see. We currently have four openings. That's kind of changing. Some of this, what I have on here is honestly a little changing since I've written it. We are hiring one person in October, which brings us to technically three positions. Two of those positions are honestly frozen, and so one position will be filled, and I have two applicants that'll be hopefully fulfilling those in the next couple of months or so. Assistant Director, we had interviews yesterday for Assistant Director. We had two applicants, both out of state. We are progressing through that application and interview stage, and hopefully next week we'll have a determination on that. In July, we were approved to purchase med locking units for the ambulances and stations. Those are currently in place and operational. Basically, what it does is it allows us to track our controlled substances that we have on the units and in the station for DEA purposes and stuff like that. Station 3 has provided to be very beneficial for us with a station on that side of town, it has dramatically decreased our response times to that side of the city and the county. So we have seen a very big positive decrease, if you will, in our response times. So that is greatly appreciated on that end. Our Station 1 at Athan Mary is coming along very strong. It's going vertical with steel beams. They've started framing out the exterior walls and getting ready for exterior finishes. At the last meeting, they were noted to be approximately two weeks ahead, just because they've honestly had some good weather. The first little deal that I have here, so when I came on in April, one of my goals was to be transparent to my board, the county commissioners, and I thought it only fitting to be transparent to you guys as well, since we not only serve the county and the city and everything like that. So, this is just kind of showing your representation through the first part of the year, the first half of the year, that 914 calls were out of Station 1. Station 3 had approximately 510. Holcomb had 109. Air medical transports, a little above 200. Nursing home calls, about 182, and then other calls, 91 calls. And then I further broke that out in the next one, just to kind of show you, because not only does Station 1 respond to the city, it does respond to the county. And so you can see that 820 of the 914 calls were actual city calls that Station 1 ran. And then 355 of the 510 calls out at Station 3 were city calls. So I just kind of broke it out a little bit more. That's all I got. Again, I just wanted to try to stay transparent with you all. If you have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to ask them.
So, when you talk about, like, as far as air, when you talk about air medical transport, what is, so can you tell, what does that entail?
So, air medical transports is when we have a Eagle Med or Lifesave, or somebody come in, that we have to go and pick them up.
From the airport.
It, it's a call that we generate, but we wanted to highlight the fact that, because we don't do any IFTs or interfacility transfers, most of our transfers comes, I won't say most, all of our transfers comes from flight transfers. And to show that, 212 of those calls in the first six months were flight transfers, to wherever they're going. Most likely Wichita, Denver, wherever there's a Level 1 trauma, that's the biggest one that they go to. There are small percentages of neonatal or children's or that sort of thing, but mostly Wichita and/or Denver.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, good job.
The rest of the items, items 7B through 7H are your regular monthly reports. If you have any questions, staff would be happy to answer any questions you all may have related to any of those.
Just flights continue to keep on a record pace at the airport, and the sales tax receipts are looking good for the community, so keep flying and keep shopping in Garden City.
All right, item 6A, our meetings of note. For those meetings requiring RSVP, please do that through the city clerk's office. The other thing that I will add to that list is on Friday, September 19th, from 10 to noon, we are going to wish Derrick a farewell, thank you for his service to Garden City, and wish him well in his future endeavors as he transitions over to the county administration role, so you all are more than welcome to attend. It's a come and go event, so you guys are welcome to attend that as well. With that, it brings us to item 9A, the appropriation ordinance, which if approved would be ordinance number 2595-2025A. I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2595-2025A.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
All right, item 10A is a public hearing, a 1:30 public hearing, so we've got a couple minutes, so we're going to jump over to item 10B. Commissioner Landgraf is going to step out for this item, and I am going to call in. We've got some folks on the line, so I'll get them called in, and then we'll, we'll jump into the, the item. The item for consideration is, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales tax special obligation revenue bonds for Sports of the World Phase 2, and if approved, it would be ordinance number 3019. Hello, good afternoon all, this is Danielle Burke. You guys are in the city commission meeting. Would you all mind sharing who all is in the conference already?
Hi, it's Mary Carson.
Yeah, good, Mary.
All right, it's Mary Carson with Spencer Fane Bond Counsel.
Mark Abbott with Paul Snell for the developer.
Michael Lambert recruiting associates, the underwriter.
Awesome, thank you all. I'm going to go through the memo, and then, Michael, I will pass it off to you to do a brief overview on some of the attachments. I will note that we've got a 1:30 public hearing, so we may have to start this item, pause it so we can go over to that public hearing, and then jump back into that item. So I'll keep you guys on the line for the, the entire time. All right, so the background related to this item, in 2014, the original Star Bond District was created, and in 2019, the first round of Star Bonds were issued. The 2019 bonds were scheduled to mature over 20 years, but were subject to mandatory redemptions or payment of principal from surplus sales tax revenues. As a result, the 2019 bonds were paid in full on June 1, 2025. In connection with the proposed Phase 2 project, the city commission approved resolution number 3130-2024 declaring official intent to issue Star Bonds for Sports of the World Phase 2 in October of 2024. On February 18th, 2025, the city commission held the public hearing and approved ordinance number 3007-2025 to expand the Star Bond District. On June 3rd, 2025, the city commission held a public hearing and approved ordinance number 3017-2025 approving the project plan amendment. On July 10th, 2025, the Lieutenant Governor and Secretary of Commerce provided a determination letter determining the Phase 2 district project is an eligible area, approving the project plan amendment and approving the issuance up to, of up to $45,126,189 in Star Bond financing, exclusive of financing costs. financing exclusive of financing costs. The Star Bonds are issued, oops, sorry about that. The proceeds of the Star Bonds may be used to finance up to the $45,126,189 in eligible project costs plus the cost of issuance, which includes bond reserve funds and capital interest costs. The other costs of the project will be funded by private equity. The proposed bond ordinance authorizes issuance of the Star Bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $49,715,000. Additionally, the bond ordinance allows for the use of a limited offering memorandum and the approval and authorization to execute necessary documents to complete the transaction. The Star Bonds are issued as three separate term bonds with principal maturing in 2029, 2033, and 2039. The bonds are subject to mandatory redemptions or the payment of principal beginning June 1 of 2026. If incremental tax collections produce a surplus over the amounts necessary to provide for current debt service payments for all Star Bonds. The Star Bonds are special obligation bonds and payable only from the amounts pledged under the bond indenture consisting of the available incremental sales tax revenue defined by the Star Bond indenture, collected by the city and the state in the Star Bond District, and applied as provided in the tax distribution agreement between the city, the state treasurer, and the bond trustees. The Star Bonds are not general obligation debt of the city and do not obligate the city, the state, or any political subdivision to levy taxes or to budget or make appropriations of payments for the bonds. The issuance of the Star Bonds is subject to final approval by the Secretary of Commerce, and the bond transcript must be approved by the Kansas Attorney General. The anticipated closing date for the bonds is September 30th of 2025. There are two alternatives. I'll read through those briefly. We'll jump over to the public hearing, and then after that, Michael, I'll ask you to go through some of the attachments. So the alternatives that the commission is going to be asked to consider is, one, to approve ordinance 3019-2025 or to not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance. The fiscal note is the same as the other Star Bond items that have come before you. The sales tax generated in the district will be used to pay back the bonds tied to this project. So I'm going to hit the pause button. We're going to jump over to the public hearing. I apologize, Michael, Mary, and Mark, if you wouldn't mind hanging with us as we work through a different item briefly, and then we'll jump back over to this item.
We'll wait for Commissioner Landgraf to get back to the bench.
All right. Item 10A is a public hearing for consideration to adopt the development plan and establish a reinvestment housing incentive district for San Saige Square Phase One by ordinance, and the ordinance is brought before you all for consideration. If approved, it would be ordinance number 3020.
Good afternoon. As required by state statute, the San Saige Square Phase One Development comes before the governing body to consider the proposed development plan and to consider establishing the reinvestment housing incentive district, or RHID. This is the last action the city commission must consider before the development has an approved district. San Saige Square Phase One is generally located at 1801 Palace Drive. Phase One of this development will include four multifamily residential buildings, each containing 12 dwelling units for a total of 48 dwelling units. The development plan exhibits that were available for public inspection since August of 2025 and have been modified as follows. One, the name of the owner and developer has been changed to Garden City Partners One LLC. Two, the consent to assignment provision in paragraph 40 of the development agreement has been removed due to the closing of the underlying real estate to the new owner and developer. And three, the eligible project cost reimbursement cap and feasibility study, exhibit C in the development plan, have been increased to $3,204,176. But this is not a result of a change to expiration date of the district of 22 years. According to our current Community Housing Assessment Team CHAP study, to meet the current housing needs, the city needs to build 1,395 units between 2025 and 2030, and the governing body has set a goal of 4,000 units by 2030. From 2020 to 2024, 322 RHID units have been completed. According to the CHAP study and the rate of housing development, Garden City continues to show a need for units to be built. If the proposed ordinance is adopted, the Board of County Commissioners and USD 457 will have 30 days to evaluate the proposed RHID. Should either taxing entity determine it has an adverse effect on their jurisdiction, then that taxing entity will need to adopt resolutions stating such. If no such resolutions are passed, then the ordinance shall be in effect. If within that timeframe, either of the referenced taxing entities pass such a resolution, the city will need to take action to repeal the ordinance as required by state statute. And there are two alternatives before you today. The governing body may approve the attached ordinance, and two, the governing body may not approve the attached ordinance. And staff recommends the governing body approve the attached ordinance, and there's a fiscal note. The city would reimburse property tax increments to the developer over the life of the RHID, which is up to 22 years. The amount of the property tax distributions cannot exceed the $3,204,176.
I'll open the public hearing at this time. Any questions for the developer or any public comment on this item? Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Dennis Johnson with Garden City Partners One LLC, so I am here to field any questions and definitely excited about this opportunity to bring this new housing project to Garden City. We can't wait to break ground, so we are very anxious to get going. Love the community, everything about it, love being part of it, appreciate the opportunity. So I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? So do you have an anticipated, if this is approved, do you have an anticipated groundbreaking date?
I think we're hoping to break ground yet the end of this month to the early part of October, subject to this process, of course.
Then my other question, so are these, I know these will be built in phases, but so how long before the project will be totally built out, do you anticipate?
It's about a 12-month build, so if you take October, give or take, to the end of 2026, so we should have them fully built. We're hoping to actually even start maybe getting certificate of occupancy and as building one is complete, and hopefully leasing up. So we're hoping start to finish within 18 months of completion, we would have 48 new families housed here.
Goodness, that's awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any comments from the public? We'll close the public hearing at this time. Entertained a motion on item ordinance 3020, 3020, 2025.
I move to approve ordinance number 3020-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? Second. There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much.
We're getting our snuggles ready.
There you go. Thank you very much. Again, note that Commissioner Landgraf is stepping down for item 10B. We'll go back and...
All right. Thank you, commission, for jumping back and forth between these agenda items. Michael Lambert with Cruz and Associates is on the line, and he provided to the city, and we've included for you all in your packets, a kind of post-pricing discussion. Because Star Bonds are a little bit different and a little bit unique, and this ended up being a private placement, I wanted to ask Michael to walk through kind of that presentation with you all very briefly, so that if you've got any questions, you can ask those at that time. So, Michael, I'll scroll through that presentation if you want to walk through it for everybody.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. Good afternoon. In front of you, you should have a post-pricing discussion leading up to these bonds, just kind of a recap of what we've done. As we went out to market and find investors, we were able to start that process around August 28th. We spent about a week and a half of identifying previous Star Bond buyers' accounts that we knew had interest in this type of product, and spent a significant amount of time essentially educating and introducing this project to those clients. And then, leading up to September 4th, we started sending out some pricing thoughts, and then we ended up having a discussion with city members on September 8th, and then went into official order period on September 9th to get the bonds locked in from a pricing standpoint. The post-pricing discussion is a book that we put together after we finished the pricing just to go over what kind of materialized over a 12-hour period. So as we scroll through here on the second page, it's a timeline that just kind of outlines what we did. We had a pre-pricing call on September 8th to go over where we wanted to price the bonds. September 9th, we have order period, and the order period is where we actually get the orders locked in with investors and get them lined up. After we get that put together, we go back over final numbers with the city membership, and then we had to keep on purchasing agreement to lock in those orders with those investors. On the third page is just a quick overview of the transaction. I'm going to go over that pretty quickly, but we can dig back into it if we need to. But the amount of bonds needed to fully fund the project cost that the developer was asking for, and that was approved by the state, is $49,715. Again, pricing date, September 9th. We're looking to close September 30th, and then that's the details of the structure. We'll go on that if we need to. On the fourth page, this is where we kind of provide a recap of the investors that came in. Again, I'll say we worked really hard on trying to identify every investor, and what we kind of refer to as no stone unturned. We reached out to probably 50-plus accounts that we knew would have had interest leading into the order period. We didn't know how many of those accounts were going to come in. We knew we had had good conversations about the deal. It's just these guys keep their orders pretty close to them until the order period starts. At the end of a one-hour order period, we were about nine times over on the subscriptions, so that's really good. And we ended up having about 27 accounts that put orders in. Not all those accounts got bonds, but most of them did get a little bit of what they had put in for. On page five, you'll kind of see our pricing thought, or where we went out pre-pricing. As Danielle had indicated earlier, we went out with three bullet maturities, one in 2029, one in 2033, and one in 2039. And based off of the market movement that we had from the day before and the oversubscription that we had in the orders, we were able to lower the 2033 and 2039 maturities by about 11 basis points on the yield. So a good pricing, good showing, and it went well from a pricing standpoint. On the sixth page is just the sources and uses, and as I indicated, we needed $49,715 to supply the developer with the amount of money he needed. Out of that, we had original issue discount of $298,000 roughly, and that gives us total sources of $49,416,965. Out of that, we give a developer the project budget of $45,126,189 that would be funded from Star Bonds. Since this is an existing Star Bond District, and the previous bonds, 2019 bonds, had been paid off, the state had essentially stopped allocating tax revenues to this district until the new bonds get issued. And so just to be conservative and make sure that we have enough money to pay that first interest payment, we funded capitalized interest of $1,636, and that takes us through the June 1, 2026 payment date. The Star Bonds typically have a reserve fund just in case sales tax don't come in as anticipated or if there's any fluctuations in sales tax collection. And so we set that requirement at six months of interest on the bonds, so that's $1,219. And then we had cost of issuance miscellaneous cost, $1,433, to round out that $49,416,965. Page seven shows the detailed cost of issuance. And then page eight, as you probably recall from 2019 or other Star Bond transactions, the way these typically are presented is you have the collections come in, you allocate money to pay interest, you have money set aside, you're punishing draws on reserve, and then we have a third waterfall that you set aside, the upcoming interest payment, and then anything else left over essentially 15 days before payment date is used to prepay principal. And so that's referred to as a turbo bond redemption. And the way we structured this is a chronological recall, so any money that's used to pay principal will first be applied to the 2029 maturity. After that maturity is fully paid, you move to 2033. After that maturity is fully paid, you go to 2039. In your packet, we have run a couple of case analysis in addition to this case one. This case one essentially assumes that your sales tax from your Star Bond District after you've covered a base will essentially equal what you have collected over the previous 12 months. So this essentially assumes that if a district continues to do what it's supposed, or what it's done over the last 12 months, then these bonds should be paid off by 2034. Now, obviously, there can be things that can happen that can slow down those collections. There could be stores that may shut down. There could be some misallocations, so we never know if this is going to play out correctly or not. But as far as presenting it to investors, we ran this case. Another case that we ran was assuming that some of the stores that were projected to come online with the refinery discount tire come online. That's obviously going to speed it up a little bit. And then we ran a stress test, assuming if the sales tax collections experienced pressure, you know, how much of that pressure could it withstand in order to still pay off by 2039? So that concludes our pre or post-pricing. I believe you do have more detailed numbers that essentially just goes through these and provides additional detail that we can go through if you would like, but that's the overview. I am happy to answer any questions you have about the pricing or the transaction.
Any questions? Entertained a motion on this item, and that's ordinance 3019-2025.
I move that we approve ordinance number 3019-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us. I appreciate your patience. The item passed, so we'll get you the executed documents later today.
Can I make a comment to Michael before you get off?
Sure.
Michael, hey, this is Manny Ortiz, city commissioner. You can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I'd like to just, I like your enthusiasm of the future of this bond payoff. I mean, I'd like to take it a little bit one step further in giving you a little bit of backup on that as well, because with this coming online, we're going to bring in a lot more, we're going to attract a lot more commutes coming in. So I'd like to think that this thing can get paid off quicker, but in hopes of this going well and seeing it come together well and this quickly, and the amazing job that you guys have done, I believe that's very possible. So thank you for your work, and Mary Carson, your work as well on this, and all of the investors, so.
Yeah, I did want to say the rates are absolutely incredible in this market, and so I was shocked when we saw the rates, and so I don't think we could ask for anything better. It just shows the strength of Garden City and the dedication to all of these different opportunities that we have. So yeah, thank you for your work, Mary and Michael.
Very good. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city, and I agree, we want to be conservative on our side, so we kind of assume that once your refinery gets open, Phase Two gets open, you're going to see a lot more traffic, and we were hoping this would kind of be maybe not worst case, but a conservative case. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with this group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. We're going to jump down to item 10E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the Uniform Public Offense Code for 2025. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3021-2025. Jimmy?
Good afternoon, Danielle. Mayor, commissioners, good afternoon. So this is a yearly UPOC update. These are for more than criminal offenses, not necessarily the traffic. That will be next. Pretty light updates this year. There was only one change that was recommended, and that just deals with the expansion of some definitions on the types of infrastructure that are covered for this special type of trespass violation applying to water infrastructure, communications infrastructure, things that need to be protected. And those are to mere changes that occurred at the state level, so we incorporated those changes as well. There was a little bit of additional tweaking that we needed to do on the city side just to update some references that didn't get made by the league. So all of those have been cleaned up, and that's really pretty much it for the changes to the UPOC of this year.
Any questions? Entertained a motion on this item.
I move to approve ordinance number 3021-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
That takes us to item 10F. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the standard traffic ordinance for 2025. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3022-2025. Jimmy?
Thank you again. Hello again. So, this is the traffic version of the, pretty much the majority of the offenses that are prosecuted in municipal court. There were three changes made by the league this year. One of them, well, a couple of them relate to follow state law changes. The first one is there's a brand-new traffic infraction, and it's more or less a move-over law for vehicles that have flashers or cones on the side of the road. It details the actions that drivers have to do. So, really, just a codification of common courtesy that hopefully we all follow, but now it's a violation across the state and in Garden City. The second change is really just a little bit of housekeeping. The league had corrected a reference to a worksite, sorry, an all-terrain vehicle in the worksite utility vehicle section. That is cleaned up now. Last is there are certain procedures that the courts engage in when people don't pay their traffic tickets. This was part of a law where part of it sunsetted at the end of last year. So, this is just some more additional housekeeping just to remove that off the books since that law is no longer available or effective. And there really, I don't believe, no, there were no other changes besides those three.
Any questions for Jimmy? None being, entertain a motion on this item. Again, ordinance 3022-2025.
I move you approve ordinance number 3022-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
All right. Now, we will jump back to item 10C. So, I apologize for the back and forth as we get through all of our ordinances and resolutions. Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the amendment to the Garden City zoning regulations to add cigar lounges as permitted use within the C3 central business district and to add definitions relating thereto. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3023. John?
Good afternoon. At the June 17, 2025, City Commission meeting, staff requested direction from the City Commission regarding next steps for a lounge cigar lounges in the central business district. There are currently two obstacles in place that would prohibit this type of establishment. First, the local version of the Kansas Indoor Clean Air Act bans indoor smoking except in certain exempted locations. While there are eleven exempted locations under state law, the city only has two exempted locations provided in the city code. The City Commission has the authority to add an additional exempt location for cigar lounges. If that exempt location is added to the City Commission, is added, the City Commission may include various regulatory requirements regarding air quality control and ventilation, fire safety and ash disposal, building and operational controls and occupancy and separation. The second obstacle is that this is not a conditional or permitted use in any zoning district. So, the zoning regulations will need to be amended to include this use, and staff recommends that it be included as a permitted use within the C3 central business district. This will require additional definitions to be included because there are several existing definitions related to smoking in the city code. Staff has accounted for this by adding new definitions for cigar tobacco stores and cigar lounges. Proposed amendment limits the use of, limits the use to traditional cigar lounge activities involving the use of cigars and pipe tobacco and allow permit the use of cigarettes, AB products, or non-tobacco products. In order for cigar lounge to operate, the following amendments would be required. Code of Ordinance Amendment, adoption of the third local exception for cigar lounges and a zoning regulation amendment to include, it to be a permitted use within the C3 central business district and to include definitions for cigar tobacco stores and cigar lounges. And then the new proposed changes are listed down below the staff report. At the August 21, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed amendment. And there are two alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may approve the ordinance, and two, the governing body may not approve the ordinance. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. And there's no fiscal impact on this.
So, John, what's the distance from entrance to a business that they can get to to have a smoke or tobacco? Is there a restriction of that?
I thought it was fifty feet. I thought it was fifty feet from the entrance.
Fifty feet. Okay. So, the second question would be then, if it is fifty feet, what happens to an adjoining business that has that, that distance of, you know, being near another entrance to have that tobacco? If, I'm just, have you guys crossed all, checked all the boxes and things, or is that something that's coming after this is approved?
So, the fifty feet, fifty foot rule that you're referencing would be for the outdoor areas. So, the way that some of the, the way that this business is going to be constructed, it's supposed to contain all that smoke within the business and also that they have to follow the mechanical code as well that requires certain types of ventilation. So, we don't expect there to be any issues with, you know, smoke, people standing, you know, outside and smoking, or smoke going from the inside of the building to be going towards the outside. And a lot of those specifics as far as operational controls and infrastructure controls, those are going to be in the second agenda item that we have after this. That's where a lot of that control aspect and regulation aspect comes in.
Okay.
Not expected to be an issue, but.
Yeah. I mean, if the, yeah, if the question comes up, hey, you know, I have this business, but my next-door neighbors are staying outside their door within that fifty feet, and they're smoking, and it's bothering my customers. I mean, those are the kind of questions that's going to kind of arise here.
Yeah, the patrons shouldn't be outside.
Okay.
Consuming the cigars anyways.
Okay.
I don't believe for this particular business plan that that is something that, I believe that the game plan is for them to have it and contain indoors anyways.
Okay. So, as far as expanding it, so we're making exceptions to the Clean Indoor Air Act. So, thinking about this idea of the C3, so what, is that the limiting factor? It can only be located in the downtown corridor? These type of cigar lounges or these type of businesses? Or can it be expanded anywhere in the city?
So, that is correct. It would be limited to the C3. So, this is the first stage of it as far as what was presented today. This is the zoning regulation part. The second part would be the Indoor Clean Air Act exception. So, yes, the only places where that exception would be applicable would be where the zoning is proper, which by the zoning regulations, it's only going to be in that downtown corridor. So, it is a little bit confusing because we have the zoning regulations, but then we also have restrictions and regulations, but then we have existing tobacco cigarette codes. So, there's a unique interplay kind of between all of them. We believe we've captured all of those cross-references that need to happen. So, yes, it is limited.
So, once this is, if this is approved, so once it's approved, then basically after this, then it's going to go to the Planning Commission, or it goes to who? Like, say you want to open up another cigar lounge in the C3, you know, district. So, then it no longer comes to the City Commission, it just goes through the regular channels? As long as they follow all of the rules or all of the ordinances, then they can open up a cigar lounge? Is that correct?
So, more or less, yes. It would not have to actually go through the Planning Commission approval.
Okay.
The way that the staff recommended this to be set up on the zoning side is that it's a permitted use, so like a use as a matter of right, where you don't, as long as you follow the rules, you can operate under that use. We didn't recommend, or we thought it would be better that way than making it a conditional use, where each time you had to go back to the Planning Commission for conditional use approval. So, so, yeah, I mean, it would still have to go through probably a pretty lengthy site plan review process with NDS and the Fire Marshal, especially with Trent and his people on the building code side of it, just because we do have building code that could apply, fire code, mechanical code, and then, of course, just the special regulations that we, that the commission decides to.
I'm sorry, I have one more question that someone asked me, and I don't know the answer. So, as far as say there is a restaurant downtown that wants to turn part of its restaurant into a cigar lounge, so will that have to be separated from the food area, or how are they going to handle that as far as smoking, you know, using tobacco, pipe smoke, or a cigar lounge within a restaurant? Is that going to be allowed? And I said, I didn't know, so.
So, the way that it's structured right now is that each location where not only the smoking occurs, but also to where any of that smoke can traverse to.
Right.
They have to be approved by essentially Trent for being able to handle smoke. So, it's really focused on the area in which smoking is being done. They would not be able to get approved for like the restaurant side of it, to, you know, for any of that smoke to cross over or to be happening there. And the, and maybe Trent can explain this a little bit more easily.
No, I'm sorry.
Even a little bit outside of my woodhouse on that. But Trent was consulted with this, and we had a lot of back and forth. He really wanted to limit the area which he can smoke to specific locations. That way, you know, you don't have, even within a building itself, smoke traveling to maybe a staff area or an office. Each one of those individual rooms within even the smoking lounge building has to be approved separately by Trent, and of course, all the zoning would have to apply as well. So, we don't believe that that could be a possibility.
All right. Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item. Again, ordinance 3023-2025.
I move you approve ordinance number 3023-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any more discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nay. That item passed. Thank you.
That takes us to item 10D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance amending code section 62-210.24 of the Code of Ordinances to allow for indoor smoking and cigar lounges. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3024.
Mayor Commissioners, at the June 17, 2025 meeting, the governing body directed staff to proceed with amending the Code of Ordinances and zoning regulations to allow for indoor smoking and cigar lounges. The current city code of ordinances prohibits indoor smoking except in private homes and residences. The current Garden City's zoning regulations does not include a permitted or conditional use for cigar lounges. At the August Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval to amend the zoning regulations to include cigar lounge as a permitted use within the C3 central business district and add new definitions related to such use, cigar and tobacco stores and cigar lounge. These proposed amendments are on a separate agenda item for consideration. Staff has worked to collaborate with the proposed developer and Fire Marshal to identify existing and new regulations and standards for the operation of cigar lounges that reflect best practices, safety considerations, and zoning compatibility. These regulations and standards are referenced by or included in the proposed ordinance and include new regulations for a 21-year or older age limit to be on the premises, and metal ashtrays with metal covers, as well as references to existing regulations on air quality and ventilation control, fire safety and ash disposal, building and operational controls and occupancy. The 21-year-old age limit was proposed by the developer to reflect the intended customer base and to address community protection considerations. According to KSA 21-6110, there are 11 exceptions to the indoor smoking ban under state law. A list is included in the attachments. The city has adopted two of the exceptions according to the Code of Ordinance section The next step would be to amend the Code of Ordinances to adopt a third local exception for cigar lounges. For this exception to apply, however, the business must comply with all aforementioned regulations and standards, along with all other applicable laws, codes, and regulations and policies. Drafting these regulations and standards as conditions for the indoor smoking ban exception rather than incorporating them into the zoning regulation gives the city more direct enforcement mechanisms. Zoning violations typically involve a corrective period before enforcement action is taken, whereas violations of these code provisions would commit immediate remedies such as municipal court citation and abatement by the chief building official or Fire Marshal, which could require the business to cease operations without delay. Your alternative to that, the governing body may approve the ordinance or the governing body may not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance.
Any questions for Alicia? None being, then entertain a motion on ordinance 3024-2025.
I move you approve ordinance number 3024-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will jump back down to item 10G. Item 10G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a correction ordinance establishing truck routes and regulating commercial truck traffic. Jimmy?
Thank you, Danielle. Mayor Commissioners, hope you have warmed up. So, this one's actually a very easy one. This draft in air was actually on me previously. We had stated, I had written that on a penalty for a third or subsequent conviction for a truck route violation, that the convicted person shall not be sentenced to a fine. Obviously, it should be, they should be sentenced to a fine. So, I made that correction and talked to Mike about it as well. There haven't been any of these convictions taken place, so it hasn't been an issue. So, this is just correcting that and asking you adopt the ordinance as proposed.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move you approve ordinance number 3025-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
There are no items under old business, so we'll jump to item 12, new business. The first item, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the city manager to submit a grant application for the Kansas Water Authority Water Project Grants Fund to support the Garden City Water Reuse Project. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In 2023, the passage of House Bill 2302 increased the amount of state funding for the State Water Plan Fund. The State Water Plan Fund was created in 1989 to provide funding for projects, programs, and activities recommended in the Kansas Water Plan to address the various water issues identified in the Kansas Water Plan. In August of 2022, the Kansas Water Authority approved the updated Kansas Water Plan, which the Kansas Water Office had developed with input from federal, state, and local agencies, regional advisory committees, nonprofit organizations, and members of the public. The passage of the law resulted in the creation of two new water-related grant funds, the Technical Assistance Grant Fund and the Water Projects Grant Fund. The Garden City Water Reuse Project is featured in the Kansas Water Project as a project to conserve and extend the high plains aquifer. The Kansas Water Office has approved, has provided the city with $300,000 in funding for the prior, for the project prior to the passage of House Bill 2302. Staff proposes submitting an application for an additional $700,000 in the Kansas Water Plan funding for the Garden City Water Reuse Project through the Water Projects Grant Fund. If awarded, the proceeds from the grant would be used to offset the non-federal matching funds required by the city's federal grant administered by the Environmental Protection Agency. City staff will be working to complete with the Water Projects Grant Fund submission packet and will submit the packet to the Kansas Water Office on or before September 30, 2025, if you approve it today. The alternatives, the governing body may choose to permit staff to submit the grant application, or option two is the grant. The governing body may choose not to authorize us to submit that application. And the fiscal note, if awarded, the grant proceeds would reduce the city's $4.7 million matching fund requirement by $700,000. The city previously approved a $300,000 grant agreement with the Kansas Water Office for the Water Reuse Project in April of 2025, and to date, the city has received $150,000 of those funds from the current agreement with the Kansas Water Office. And staff anticipates receiving the second half of the grant's funds when the design plans for the project are completed. If awarded, the combined funds from the Kansas Water Office would reduce the city's non-federal matching obligation by $1 million. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mike? None being, entertain a motion on this item. None being, entertain a motion on this item.
I move to permit staff to submit a grant application for the Kansas Water Office Water Projects Grant Fund.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Here's Mike.
Good luck.
Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a bid from Hutton Corporation for replacing two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Lee Richardson Zoo's Nutrition Center was built as an addition to the maintenance shop in two thousand and two. At that time, two walk-in coolers were constructed. The zoo's maintenance staff had done periodic repairs to the walls of the units, but the materials used in the original construction no longer holds up to the conditions of a cooler. Staff are regularly dealing with mold issues in the coolers. Mold is a threat to the viability of the product in the cooler, the well-being of the animals eating the product, the staff who work in the area, and could result in USDA citation. In twenty twenty four, the zoo worked with a local contractor to establish a budget for replacing the coolers. Based on the estimation, a budget of forty thousand dollars was proposed and approved in the twenty twenty four revised budget. These funds were transferred to the Capital Improvement Reserve at the end of twenty twenty four. Also in twenty twenty four, the zoo maintenance staff sanitized the refrigeration equipment, sorry, reducing some of the mold issues. The refrigeration equipment, which was replaced in twenty ten, sorry, twenty nineteen, is not part of this replacement project. The continuing mold issues come from within the walls, which have become warped and don't have the proper insulation. Cooler project was put out to bid earlier this year with no bids received in July. Feedback from one of the bidders was that the pre-walk-through bid requirement was a barrier. A request for bids was put out again without that requirement, and one bid was received August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. The company that provided the earlier estimate on which the project was budgeted didn't bid either time, although they were aware of the opportunity and expressed an interest both times. Bid received on August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five is for eighty thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, which exceeds the planned budget. Inquiries of other zoos resulted in input from one facility that has recently replaced a cooler a little larger than one of our two. Their cost working directly with a restaurant supply company and one subcontractor was about thirty five thousand. With that input and the minimal response received from the request for bids, including the company that assisted in developing the project estimate, the zoo has determined that the expectation of receiving a bid within the project estimation of forty thousand dollars is unlikely. Due to the critical importance of the walk-in coolers to the operations of the zoo, staff have evaluated options for funding the additional cost of this project beyond the forty thousand set aside for this purpose. Staff recommend utilizing some of the funds set aside in the Capital Improvement Reserve for other zoo projects as the need for the walk-in coolers is greater than those other projects. Included in the capital reserve is twenty thousand dollars initially slated for street ceiling at the zoo. That was set aside with the old street ceiling plan. Since the plan has changed, that money can be allocated, reallocated for this project. Additionally, it is expected that the total cost of the installation of the generator at the zoo will be lower than eighty eight thousand five hundred dollars, thanks to the electric department here, set aside in the Capital Improvement Reserve for that project. The savings from that project can be reallocated to help cover the additional cost for the walk-in coolers. Any remaining balance that still exists could come from other projects that are still in that Capital Improvement Fund. Alternatives before you. You may approve the bid of eighty thousand dollars nine hundred and twelve from Hutton Corporation for the replacement of two walk-in coolers at the zoo. You may reject the bid and provide us with some further guidance. Zoo staff recommend approving the bid. Fiscal note, the project will be paid utilizing funds that have been earmarked and set aside in the Capital Improvement Reserve for zoo projects. I'm not going to read the long number.
Any questions for Christie?
So I'm looking through this, Christie, and I mean, I understood kind of the process and what it takes to get a bid proposal. But for me, I mean, looking at this as a taxpayer side, that's a big jump to kind of swallow for that amount of money. And looking at this, the short, you know, the short time I had to do some research, I just went online and looked at what a cooler costs, and I mean, it's nowhere near that amount, but I just typed in what unit you were looking at and came across one that was fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty. So to me, I mean, I do this professionally as far as putting bid quotes together and things, and to me, this is a big number, and I appreciate the bid that we got, but I would advise staff to look again and maybe, could this be supplied through, like as you said in the beginning, a supplier who can come in and you order the equipment and shipped in? And this unit that I found was with the cooler unit on it, and I believe what I read through the bid proposal request was that that unit was to be taken off, the existing unit being taken off of the existing cooler that needs to be replaced. So my second question to that point is, was there an evaluation done to see if that existing cooler can handle the new, the new one getting installed? If not, I would request or require that be done also, just to make sure that we don't have any surprises on the backend when that existing cooler goes back on, or the existing coolant equipment goes back on the cooler. I guess that's where I stand with this, so.
Okay, so two aspects. What I can say is, we went out twice. We were sure that, we contacted five companies in town. No bids the first time. The two companies who were interested the first time are the two that were also interested the second time. We still, we reached out five both times and got one bid after going out twice, all the time following cities, advertising, and everything else process. So there have been opportunities for companies to provide those bids. The only bid we have is the one before us. As far as the second part, those, the refrigeration equipment was replaced in twenty nineteen. If it's supporting something the same size that is insulated better than what we already have, there shouldn't be an issue.
I guess one follow-up question would be that if this could be handled as a maintenance item rather than a project item, could that be, could that be done that way?
That is always the first thing we consider before we go out because we know that it's worth funds, and we went out.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I just, I appreciate the due diligence going out, and I mean, I wish there was additional bids so you could see and compare, and I understand that at this point, really, with the age of the equipment or in the condition of the coolers, that this is something that's very important. I mean, because again, the food and the food items that are kept there are expensive, and if there's spoilage or, you know, it's no longer worth feeding to the animals, or it could cause any type of harm to people, then I understand why you had to continue to press to get to this point, so, but.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve, sorry, I have to scroll back my, I move that we approve the bid from Hutton Corporation for replacing the two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
That item passed. Thank you very much.
That takes us to the consent agenda. If approved, that would be item thirteen A through thirteen H.
Just want to ask if anybody is present in the audience for thirteen G on the environmental issue? No? Okay.
I move to approve consent agenda items thirteen A through thirteen H.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Onto Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Landgraf.
Just want to start by saying first, it's great having the joint meeting with Fannie County Commission and also with Holcomb City Council. It's good being able to get together and be able to discuss and collaborate together. It's really great being able to have these joint meetings because collaboration is really key for this success for not only Garden City, but also Fannie County and Holcomb as well. Also had a great time at the ninety ninth annual Community Mexican Fiesta. It's such a great event, being able, first be a part of the parade, but also be able to see everyone at the event itself, just tons of people. The ninety ninth annual is just a great event. And I also just want to remind folks that Fall Fest is this Saturday from nine AM to four PM. It's a great event, not only for our community, but it's also a great event that brings people to Garden City as well. And then also just want to say that it was a great job by Danielle stepping in for Matt Allen. She did a wonderful job, so I just wanted to bring that up as well. And then also just wanted to also say this is Derek's last city commission meeting, so I just wanted to wish him the best of luck as he transitions over to the county. Know he's going to do great work, and also, talking earlier about collaboration, I know we'll have great collaboration in the future with the county, so.
Commissioner Winn.
Yeah, thank you Derek for all the fun and the time that we've had, and just for your presence, not only professionally, but also with the fellowship with that, so I really appreciate it. Thank you Derek. I had a chance to be in Dodge City last Friday for a golf tournament to help the Decan Foundation, just such a joy. I still, not as impressive as Buffalo Dins, so it's a joy for that too. I was also at Victor Nellis last Wednesday, talking to those third graders, offering the importance of voting and the importance of community service, and I am grateful for Erin Stillwagging of stepping in. We had our city clerks away for a little break, and I came in last second, and so Erin supplied me with some gifts to hand out to them, so very grateful for her. And I also was at the ninety ninth Community Mexican Fiesta. I was not in the parade. Some of our fellow skydiving plans with other staff members got a little whiffed, so I did come back and join the Mexican Fiesta. Just so beautiful to see all of the heritage and culture that we have in our community, and the food was fantastic, and just for the hospitality of those around, very impressive. And also the joint meeting, I am very grateful for the transparency of the county commissioners and also their willingness to offer what they're working on, because I think that helps us know where we can aid them and allows us to be a part of the conversation that they're trying to pass with the half-cent sales tax. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I'll kind of lead with that transparency topic there. Commissioner Winn, thank you for bringing that up. With the commission joint meeting this morning with Holcomb and county and city, I did stress the fact that we do need to bring collaboration to the table, and that was reiterated by Chairman Schultz as well, but I believe we ought to take it even further to be transparent about what we offer to the table here and looking after the taxpayers' dollars and whatnot. I know taxes is a big issue on the table and things right now, especially with budget cuts and issues like that, so I'd like to just bring that level up a little bit amongst everyone and just kind of be transparent on everything. While we're looking at costs, while we're looking at the new jail facility of eighty eight million dollars, why does it cost so much? Those are the questions that have been asked, and one of the main points that I was kind of, it kind of clicked in my head was that, the fact that when I show up to meetings or when people come up and ask me questions, I write it down or type it in my phone and then bring those questions to the table. So if you have questions that you want answered, feel free to bring them to me or any of the other commissioners or city staff or whoever. If you don't want to be mentioned in those questions, that's totally, totally fine, but if you're thinking it, somebody else is thinking it, and that's words out of Chairman Schultz's mouth, so quoting him. But again, I'd just like to reiterate that transparency part of the collaboration so that we're all understandable. That's how we gain people's trust. That's how we gain fairness across the table. That's how we just move things forward. And so I believe that, in my heart, that we can get there, we're just not there yet, but we can get there. The celebration, moving on on that, celebration of the Mexican Fiesta Parade was great. Tom, we did miss you. We had a twenty twenty five Dodge Ram, so it was Commissioner Landgraf drove, so he didn't, he didn't throw me or Commissioner Andrew off the truck, so. But it was fun, it was, it was good. I walked a portion of that parade by foot, didn't ride in the truck, but I was able to shake hands and give high fives and try to steal candy from kids, but that didn't work out well. No, but it was well attended. Some of the community members said it wasn't as long as what it used to be, but I think people enjoyed the actual timeline of it, and then they were able to go to the park, Stevens Park, and enjoy the great food and, and community and celebration of the event there, so lots of great things happening. Congratulations Derek, we're gonna miss you. Like I said, I am gonna kind of ask you to write everything down so we can continue what your work has done here in the city to kind of keep going. So yeah, we're gonna, you'll do great at the county, I believe that, so thanks for everything that you did here. Also like to congratulate Christie on the check from the Mariah Fund, that's awesome. For another community to kind of recognize what we have and what they want to share with us, we should do the same back and forth into their community, so that's, that's awesome to see that, that kind of relationship between communities like that, so. Also like to just mention one more thing, I did remember what I was gonna bring up last city commission on my report, and that was just to ask about where we, where we were at with kind of setting a time or even thinking about a time where we can have a meeting, whether a city commission meeting or a county joint meeting with the city at the high school, so that we can present in front of a young crowd like that. So I know it was mentioned in commissions before, when Atchison came to town, their mayor kind of proposed that they do that in their community, so that's, I think that's a great addition that we should maybe kind of hop on. And then lastly, on the next report would be for the trees and the mulch on Main Street, and then on Eighth Street through Stevens Park, if there's anything, or if there's any plans to get those trees trimmed up or mulch kind of laid down in those areas, so that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Andrew.
So I just wanted to say thank you to the county commission and all the turnout for the county commission, our joint meeting today, I think it's exciting. They had an incredible turnout, all the commissions were there, all the commissioners were there, plus they had incredible support from their staff. Of course, our staff is always incredible, it's not that we were trying to compete, but you know, hello. But you know, I really appreciate their staff really supporting them, and the thing that I thought was really exciting is that we also had many community partners who came, and that makes a difference because again, this isn't just about the city or the county, but it's really about us as a community. So I really appreciate all the work that we got done there, and I'm excited about our next meeting coming up next year. I did want to say, thank you, you know, I was, as I was reading through and contemplating the cigar lounge and thinking about how important, you know, early on I did a lot of work around the Clean Indoor Air Act and was really involved in our community, making sure that passed, and so it was a really hard decision. But I did want to say I really appreciate the comments and the due diligence, not only from our planning commission and also from our attorney's office, but also this idea of the planning commission, who really were asking powerful questions, and so really what helped me make that decision was going through their comments and their, their struggle, and also coming up with their decision, and again, it was unanimous across that planning commission, so I'm believing that we can make this work in Garden City and then also respect a lot of people. I did want to say, I enjoyed, yeah, walking the Mexican Fiesta Parade. A lot of people asked me if I was tired afterwards, I should have said yes, but I mean, it was really, it was really fun. I kept running into the back of the pickup, I don't know if Commissioner Landgraf did that on purpose, but I'm beginning to wonder, so. Really enjoyed that. I did want to say thank you to the Mariah Fund. You know, Mariah Fund has been something that's in place, that has impacted southwest Kansas for like they said, the past eighteen, eighteen years or more years, and I think it was really exciting that who they chose at the end to really honor, and I know that, I wish the fund would continue, but I know that the casinos have gone a different way, but eleven thousand five hundred dollars when you're not expecting it is incredible, so I thought that was really exciting. I also just wanted to say thank you to the residents who, yeah, reached out and emailed out and were respectful as far as how we handle issues at the city, and we were able to get them directed in the right, and so again, as Commissioner Ortiz said, if you have questions or if you have concerns, you know, that's what you, as city commissioners, we are your representatives, and so that's where we're gonna help channel those or funnel those into the right places and so they can, they can get answered for you. Last thing I want to say is congratulations to Derek. I know he really, you could tell he really was enjoying the day named after him, but no, we, we really appreciate all the work that you've done with us. I mean, the partnership continues, and so I just want to, we are so grateful that you came to us first, because you had to cut your teeth here and get all of the learning done, and now as you take it to them, I mean, they've got not only incredible wise man, but also someone with compassion. man, but also someone with compassion and heart for our city and our community and our county, so we'll miss you being here at our events and at our commission meetings, but we know that you're gonna be doing a great job for not only the county commission, but also for Garden City, so thank you for that, and that's all.
Just kind of highlight all of what the other commissioners did note. I did also, was at the Fiesta Parade, I did present the proclamation to kind of kick off the event, and Stevens Park, very well attended, liked to see everybody there. Did attend the Garden City High School Homecoming Parade. Homecoming is this week. There's a number of events and activities planned. Friday is the Homecoming Football Game, and that starts at 7:00. Just wanted to also mention, good joint meeting, always nice to, you know, in some counties, the city and county commissions can't work together at all. We have the unique privilege of working together and everybody driving in the same direction, and that's why our community and the county's been so successful in where we're at and becoming the regional hub of western Kansas. Again, Derek, congratulations on your move up and your surprise day. Just wanted to thank you for all that you've done for our city and community and good things that will take place in the county. There are candidate forums taking place. This is an election year, so just, if people are interested, I know this was talked about a little bit in our joint meeting, but if people are interested, there are candidate forums that are taking place throughout this, the next couple of weeks as we get closer to November, so check those out and find out who your best candidates are and listen to what they have to offer. Our community, our school district, college is one as well, and the deadline to register to vote is October 14th, so please be mindful of that. And that's all I have. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Great. Cool beans.
Good job, Danielle.
Thank you.
Awesome job, yep.
Sorry for all.